Welcome everyone to the Highscope Roundtable Series. My name is Caroline Ferry. I'm a member of the Highscope team and I'm filling in today for Dr. Alejandra Barazza, the President of Highscope, who could not join us today, but who would like to extend a warm welcome to our participants and panelists. Thank you for joining us for the fourth session in our series based on "Segregation by Experience." Today's session is titled "Working with Communities and Families in Early Childhood Education." Our roundtable series is based on the book "Segregation by Experience: Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades", written by Jennifer Kizader and Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki-Colegrove, who is joining us as a panelist today. If you've enjoyed previous roundtables, or if the discussion we have planned today sparks an interest, you can purchase your copy of "Segregation by Experience" at the Highscope store at highscope.org/store. It is my honor to welcome Sunmin Lee as our moderator for today's session. Sunmin Lee is a doctoral candidate in early childhood education in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Texas at Austin. She is a member of the Agency and Young Children and Research Collective. Her current dissertation research is on early childhood inclusive education to understand inclusion from the perspectives of parents of children with disabilities. Sunmin, thank you for joining us and I invite you to take the floor. Welcome.
Thank you Caroline. I'm honored to be here today as a moderator of today's session. And I'd like to start by introducing our panelists today, beginning with Dr. Colegrove. Dr. Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki-Colegrove is an Associate Professor of Bilingual and Early Child Education at Texas State University. Dr. Colegrove is the co-author of our book "Segregation by Experience." And Dr. Colegrove's work seeks to understand the relationship between Latinx immigrant parents and schools in the early grades. And she privileges parent voices to demonstrate ways in which stakeholders can have more reciprocal types of relationships. Dr. Marjorie Orellana is a professor of urban schooling at the University of California, Los Angeles. Dr. Orellana is also an Associate Director of the International Program on Migration and co-director of faculty for the Teacher Education Program at UCLA. Dr. Orellana's research centers on the experiences of immigrant youth in urban schools and communities, including as language and cultural brokers for their families. Dr. Travis Wright is an Associate Professor of Counseling Psychology at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Dr. Wright is the founder and a director of the Basis Project, which is a school and community-based intervention for homeless preschool students, their families, and teachers. Dr. Wright is a nationally recognized expert on resilience and emotionally responsive teaching, especially for children developing in the midst of adversity. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Colegrove, so she can share some of her knowledge and experiences around with families and communities.
So muchas gracias for having me here. Thank you so much for inviting me. I am really excited to be a panelist today with Marjorie Orellana and Travis Wright and share some of the work that is centered in the voices of Latino immigrant parents. So the first thing I would like to do is to share with you actually a video, a short video, from Ms. Bailey's classroom. This video is about the car accident. So if you guys read the car accident part, so this is about the car accident. And what happened with the car accident is that we have, we're gonna start filming in the classroom and Ms. Bailey had a minor car accident. So we actually go and start that day and we started the following day. But the kids, the children were very concerned and worried about her. So they wanted to know what happened to Ms. Bailey. So when she came in that day for school and she talked to students, they really bombarded her with all these questions. So I would like to show you a little clip. And what I would like to do is to give you the responses of the parents about that clip. But I do want you to be paying attention and thinking about what and how children actually learn. So let me share that little clip with you. Okay, it's there. Hold on. And maybe there'll be, oops, nope, that's not it. And they show there. Look where we're going from. Yeah. Now we do it. Okay.
The reason why Ms. Jones was in here yesterday is because I was in a car accident. So what happened is I was driving to work, to school, on Sixth Street with Mateo. The car is destroyed, it's totaled. But all of us, both of us, Mateo, the girl that hit us, and me, were doing fine.
My mom's light, it busted. It busted and then on the side of the car got all scratched.
Ms. Jones, my car's crashed.
Let's take turns because I want to hear your story.
I got in a car accident when I was gonna go pick up my brother and then from preschool. And then this car, she didn't see the stop sign, so she kept on going and then she crashed into it. And my dog was there with me.
Okay, Monica?
What happened to the people?
What happened to the people? Like the people in the car accident?
They get hurt.
What happened?
What happened? What are the noises you could hear in a car crash? Okay, like maybe the hog is, okay, beep beep. What else?
The airbag.
The airbag popping out? Viscina? So that's probably the car.
The car crashing.
Yeah, the body of the car that's crumbling. Kelly?
So I wanna note, I actually wanna point out some of the things that our parents noticed about these short clips. So when thinking about what and how children learn. So one of the things our parents noticed was that learning, in order to happen, needed to be in spaces where they feel in confianza. So I use the word confianza because that's a word our parents use and confianza in Spanish means trust. So children need to trust the teachers and the adults in this classroom. Teachers need to make them feel comfortable so they can ask questions and add information. This was a very important component for parents because they thought, well, nobody asks questions if the person, the other person thinks that your questions are not important. Or there's not like a relationship till you know that my question is important to me, therefore I want to ask that type of question. So the fact that the teacher needed to have this connection to show that the child is important so they feel comfortable asking questions. The other thing was that parents talk with the idea that they beat a lot of the conversation was around homework. And I know everybody has homework, everybody gives homework. And one of the things that they talk is that when children come home with a homework, and when children come home with a homework, sometimes children don't know what to do. And that was really indicators to parents that children be and feel comfortable to ask questions for clarification or sometimes to ask questions when they don't understand something. So it felt to them almost like, well, one, my child might not be paying attention. It's not paying attention, but also doesn't feel comfortable to ask a question. And that was a marker of an indicator that maybe the relationship or this way to feel confianza or trust the teacher wasn't there. Parents noticed that for learning to happen, children needed to be curious. So one of the markers that parents mentioned was curiosity by asking questions. So questions to understand a new topic, questions to ask for more details. In the video, you notice how Ms. Bailey actually created that web. And parents thought developing questions was a way to teach children how to pursue an interest. So took the time, if you see Ms. Bailey in the video, she really took the time to listen to all the children and in that web, it's one of the questions. So parents noticed how Ms. Bailey integrated the car accident. And they actually use the word integrated. And I think we think about curriculum and we think about knowledge that the children bring and how we use it into our teaching. And so that we're talking about how she integrated the car accident. She took this opportunity to use it as a part of the curriculum. Because she noticed the interest and care of the children and curiosity they had in all the knowledge they had about accidents as they mentioned their own encounters with car accidents. First thing that happened the day after the car accident was actually the kids coming with a lot of questions because they cared for Ms. Bailey and they wanted to make sure that she was doing fine. Her child was fine and whoever the other person was in the accident too. So through these dialogues in these themes, parents noticed how children were formulating questions and sharing their experiences. And they were using their vocabulary. In these dialogues, they were learning more because they were listening to one another and listening how other children use their words by adding comments and asking questions. You need to use language to learn how to use it. So parents say those children in the film have a rich vocabulary, which we know that's what teachers have said in the past. But teachers didn't focus with interviews. Instead, they describe as using the vocabulary. Bilingual children, and I'm really interested in bilingual students, but bilingual children in the US experience sometimes really quiet and still classrooms. And so they really don't have opportunities to use their language and all the repertoires they bring from home, but also the language that they're learning. So we need to think in terms more like pointing out some of the things that children did. I would like to bring experiential knowledge. And when that happened, allow children to use their own experiences. We have children participate in the learning process by asking questions, adding details. Allow them to be curious, help children develop ideas for writing. Allow children to use and expand their vocabulary. And then when I'm thinking about the dialogue, and I know you guys saw the video where Ms. Bailey's with all the children in the carpet. And creating these conversations, this dialogue with the children, parents noticed that children are engaged in the learning. I mean, they were so willing to participate. They have things they wanted to add, questions. And so parents observed that children develop oral and listening skills. They learn from each other and from the teacher. They trust, allow children to participate freely, to develop a self-belonging, to be part of the learning community, share information and give options, ask questions for clarification, and ask for help when needed. So there's one thing that I would like to point out. Out of the parents that we interview with Jen in the book, many of them, most of them were immigrants. With exception of one parent who was a son from Tarras, so she actually lived in Tamaulipas and she walked across the border to go to school in Texas and then she went back home. But most of the parents we interview actually came to the US and they didn't continue their schooling. So they never really saw a classroom in action until they watched the video for the study, the agency study. But they really didn't get to see a classroom in action. And these were parents who were active. They went and participated in the school, they went to celebrations, they went to parties. But as they were talking in the interviews, they have never really seen teachers teaching or like an actual classroom. And so when we interviewed them and showed them the film, like the one you guys just watched, it was an opportunity to see a window into a classroom. So that makes me wonder, like, can we open our classrooms a little more? Can we have like an open door policy? Or say, this day I want parents to come into the class, so you guys are invited to come into my classroom. Because if you really don't think about it, that immigrant communities, they never get people to school here. And many of them, unfortunately, when they moved to the US, they stopped their schooling. So they didn't have more opportunities to continue their education, their formal education. So that was important. But there's two things that I would like to end my, this conversation with you. It's that what is powerful to me, and as a preschool teacher, as a bilingual teacher, what is powerful to me about the data that I just shared with you? And this comes all from the transcripts from the parents. I didn't wanna show you all those transcripts to bore you, but maybe bring the points that you might wanna know. And one of the things is that this data and what I just said to you is so sophisticated way to think about learning. Like we think about, yeah, experiential knowledge and oral development. You know, all these terms that we use in education and teacher preparation, but parents are using it too. They're noticing all these things about teaching and learning. So that tell us how sophisticated is the way they get to think and talk about learning, teaching, pedagogy. And that really goes against all these ideas and really good ideas to dismantle these deficit discourses that surround experiences of Latino immigrant parents in the US. So if we can leave with one thing, I think it's like how parents, when they have the opportunity to share and to talk about their children's education in terms of curriculum, learning, pedagogy, they have so many things to say. So my thought is like, how can we open more our classroom spaces so that dialogue, that conversation, and they can actually see what children get to do in our classroom? So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Colegrove. It was really helpful to watch the video I was explaining the book and then hear how the parents were responding to this scene, to this video, and then sharing what they were thinking about, what they were noticing. So it was really helpful, so thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Orellana so she can also share her experiences and research with us.
Okay, let me see, but sharing my screen. And putting it on presenter mode. And going back to, okay. All right, so thank you all for having me. Thank you to Kyomi and to Jen for their wonderful work, this wonderful book. Thanks to Sunmin for moderating today and to the organizers and the whole Highscope's team. As a way into this topic of sustaining and expanding the cultural and linguistic repertoires of children living and growing in bilingual and multilingual communities, I'm gonna begin with a personal story. But I do wanna note that I kinda switched from saying bilingual children to thinking about children who are growing up in rich linguistic multilingual environments. Whether or not they themselves are bilingual is not the important point. The point is that they're immersed in a rich set of resources, linguistic, cultural resources written on signs, on the walls, in the talk. So this personal story is a way into thinking about the question that was posed for the reading about how can we balance children's agency and the cultural values of respect and obedience that many children of color bring with them to school? And I'll say, I'm sharing in the spirit of the chapter, which Ms. Bailey shared from her own life and helped kids connect from their lives to school. And I'm resisting the tendency that schools really teach us not to do this kind of sharing, to keep a tight line between our personal lives and our... But Ms. Bailey modeled that and you saw how the kids responded. Now, I was not a child of color. I was white and monolingual, growing up in a working-class town. I recognize I didn't have the same challenges that children of color do in terms of how they're viewed and treated by dominant society. At the same time, my mother believed that her eight children should be seen but not heard. And obedience and respect for adult authorities were absolutely the cultural values I was raised with. I did as I was told. I was a good girl and a good student in a very limited banking model of education. Until sixth grade, when I had an unusual teacher somewhat like Ms. Bailey. Curriculum was centered on writing stories. And for the first time, I was given the opportunity to explore, to express myself, to create, not just respond to other people's questions. Now, my mother was a bit unsettled by the curriculum. And even more so when my report card came back and made some mention of me being a bit rebellious. I do think the freedom of the classroom allowed a side of me to express itself that had long been repressed. But I remember that year more than any other. I learned so much. Especially, I learned that I could have a voice, opinions. I could be a creator, I could be an agent of my own life. But sure, I had to learn how to navigate the divergent cultural values of that classroom and of my family and home. I had to navigate this tension between being a good girl and being a little bit rebellious. But in so doing, I expanded my cultural repertoire. And this is something that children of immigrants are doing all the time as they navigate between divergent cultural worlds. This has been my life work for the last 25 years, focusing on this work that the children of immigrants do as linguistic and cultural brokers, as they use their knowledge, their linguistic and cultural knowledge to speak, to read, to write, to listen, and to do things for others. This happens everywhere, as the kids say, at the dentist, in the park, at home, pharmacy. It happens in a whole variety of ways. So here's Maria talking about a letter she translated to her mother about dress code policy at the school that said her brother should bring gym shoes with rubber bottoms only. It said, "We cannot send them with sandals, flip flops, jelly shoes, or open-toed shoes." And she said, "How I tell about translating is excited because every time I translate, I feel like I'm talking to someone." And indeed, Maria shows herself talking to her mother, telling her mother, "You shouldn't sell, send chavita with sandals, flip flops, jelly shoe shoes." And her mother is the compliant one here, saying, "Okay." But Maria's wondering, you see the thought bubble? "I wonder why they can't bring sandals, flip flops, jelly shoes, or open-toed shoes?" So she's critically engaging with this text even as she translates it for her mother. And I watched Maria grow over the years. Here she is reading another letter. She has the paper in her hand, she's reading it and explaining it to her mother, who's listening. And she's engaging in what one linguist said is, "Translation is probably the most complex type of event yet produced in the evolution of the cosmos." And there, I think he was just talking about strictly translation. Kids are doing that. Plus, they are negotiating all kinds of social situations for other people. And this involves a whole set of translingual and transcultural strategies and tools. So they're reading socially, who needs translation here? Should I step in? Here's a journal by a boy writing about offering translation services because he noticed somebody in Toys R Us who didn't seem to... And so he stepped in to offer his services. But kids have to decide, should I step in? Not? Why? Where? When? Should I translate? Should I paraphrase? Should I explain things? How can I do this appropriately as a child, speaking to and for adults, and representing immigrant families to the dominant cultural world? And kids have lots of experiences of struggling with that tension and recognizing how their families are being viewed. And selectively and creatively deploying their linguistic tools to get the job done. And to actually create a kind of intercultural space for other people. So I've thought about this for a long time. I've done a lot of work looking at what actually goes on in these encounters, how kids handle these situations, what they say about it, what they learn from it. But I've also thought about what does this mean for schools? What would it mean if schools started first and foremost by recognizing these skills, seeing these competencies? And I tell you, we talked with undergraduates at UCLA who had experiences as brokers growing up. And they say, no one ever even recognized it, no one valued it. Mostly, they got the message that their bilingualism was a problem, not that it was filled with these rich potential and possibilities. So recognizing, valuing, validating, building on those skills, and helping kids to see their power. In doing this, we can both sustain cultural practices and expand those repertoires. And this leads me to tell you just a little bit about this program I've worked in for the last 11 years, designing an after-school program at a school in central Los Angeles, serving TK to five kids. It's reported in this book. I have blogs on my blog post, there's other ways you can learn about it. But this is a place where kids have a lot of agency to design with us, even to research with us. So you see the kids here at the cameras. And here's just a collage of photos of some of the things you might see happening at Bruin Club on any given day. I will say that when most people walk into this setting, they, one of the words they use is chaos. They see chaos. And I think that's because they're not used to seeing dynamic, engaged, learning environments, especially with children of color, children of immigrants, actively taking charge of their own learning, participating and even showing what's gonna be on the walls, the signs, the writing, experimenting, moving, being free in this environment to express themselves in a whole variety of ways. We play with language at Bruin Club. So this is a letter that the kids received. There's a whole backstory to it. But playing with language to see, to see how kids respond. And I'll show you just a little bit of this video, which Fina, who is Filipina, speaks Tagalog at home. Her father lives in Qatar. She lives in a Spanish-speaking community. And she's enrolled in a Korean slash English bilingual program at school. So let's see what she does as she plays with language in the setting. I'm gonna just show you parts of it in the interest of time. Oh, I'm sorry. It is kinda hard to hear. So you might have to turn up your volume, but there are subtitles.
It says, "My." Kukustaka Fina, and hello to all your friends in Bruin. Gracias, maramingsalata. Thank you. Gracias. Donkis. Gom sah, gom sah ha, hami. Gom sah habra. Gracias por vi. Would you write, would you write back to me?
So now I'm gonna show you how an undergraduate talked to her about what she had just read.
You're curious. Why? What's so curious about?
Your friend. P.S. I'm going to get what you call an email address. So you can write back to me, that will be.
What do you feel? Are you excited for email from X?
I'm curious.
You're curious. Why? What's so curious about?
I wonder what letter it's gonna send us next.
Ah, did you actually understand everything that was written in the different languages? Wow, can you translate some for me? I didn't understand what someone said.
This is kamsan habira. Would you write back to me? That's the current speech. I think this means be happy.
Happy? What about the other languages like right there? Wait, I don't... Okay, what does that mean?
I don't know. I think it means thank you.
Ah, it's all means thank you? Where are you, where are you making that interpretation from?
Cause kamsan habira means thank you in Korean. Maramingsalata means thank you in Tagalog. Gracias means thank you in Spanish.
Okay.
So I think this shows a little bit, whoops, of what's possible when we give kids a chance to sustain, explore, and expand their repertoires. And to do it in a way, these are some of the principles that guide work at Bruin Club. The kids wrote these, those are agreements. And it was important to them to include be respectful, be nice, listen, but also give advice, say hi, play, have fun. And there's a whole story about the aliens piece that I won't tell you here. So I don't, I think it's a kind of false dichotomy to think kids can either agentic or respectful. I think they can be respectful and agentic too. And I just wanna finally end with, you know, more, I started with the personal story. I'd like to close with something a little more global. As we think about the planet, we're facing tremendous ecological, cultural, social, and economic crises. And I have to ask, do we want to raise a generation of people who are only obedient and compliant? Do we want to raise children? Do we want children to be seen but not heard? Who stay in their place and do as they're told? Or do we want to support children in being flexible, versatile, adaptable, respectful, and agentic? And perhaps even a little rebellious at times as they fight against extinction and injustice? As they face a changing world and help to mediate that world for others? And I would suggest we might begin by recognizing the transcultural and translingual versatility that abounds in immigrant communities and creating more ways to recognize, leverage, sustain, and expand. and expand those competencies in schools. And I, there's a few resources here. If you want, there's a brochure about language brokering that's designed for parents, teachers, and kids. And you can download it at the site. I can put that in the chat. And or you can look at the whole, the lesson plans we designed around this. Uh, there's more information on this blog. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oriana. Um, yeah, I thank you so much. I, and it, and it also occurred to me that, that recognizing this, like, children's trans linguistic, transcultural competencies, it really reminds that the children are the participants. They are the active participants and members of their communities. And I also would love to have more conversations about this, like, balance between the children's, um, cultural values and agency, um, at the end of our, um, and but after we hear from Dr. Wright. So, um, I'd like to now turn it over to Dr. Wright so that, um, he can share, um, some of his knowledge and experiences. And then we're gonna open it up, um, to all our panelists so that we can have more conversations, um, around it. Um, Dr. Wright?
Can you? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, it, it won't allow me to start the video. Oh, there we go. Now.
Oh, yes, we can see you.
Hey, everyone. It's so nice to be with you today. Thank you very much for the invitation and also many thanks to my colleagues for their really informative, uh, informative presentations. My name is Travis Wright and I am a professor of counseling, psychology, and early childhood education at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Um, but probably more important for our, uh, conversations today, for the last twenty years, I have worked as an early childhood therapist, as an early childhood teacher, and as an early childhood, um, head start administrator, primarily working with children from, um, non-US-based cultures and who also sort of identify as non-white, sort of not first-generation American. And so, um, so that work has really, as sort of a, as someone who grew up with a very different identity, um, I've had the real gift of learning from children and families about ways that we can sort of find a conversation in a language that allow us to be really sort of understanding and supportive of each other. And so my goal today is to just share with you some tools that I've found in my research that help simplify the complexity. Um, what we're talking about is sort of navigating sort of difference, the potential for misunderstanding. A great deal of complexity, differences in the way our lives function differently, difference in the way that our lives are structured. And so sometimes it can feel overwhelming, um, sort of as, um, a participant in a relationship where there is so much difference. And that gets even more compounded in the classroom when there are multiple people with multiple perspectives all together, trying to figure out sort of how to connect. And so my goal today is to share with you three or four frameworks that have proven really effective in my own work, engaging with children and families, um, to just simplify this complexity. So I guess the short version of my sort of brief talk today is sort of where do I start when I feel overwhelmed? The first thing, um, that I think that, and I've heard, you've heard elements of this in all the presentations today, the most important thing is that we always focus on building, maintaining relationships with children and families. Children and families sort of will be more willing to engage with us around topics of misunderstanding, will be more willing to contribute to our understanding of them in our lives if they trust us. And so laying a foundation for a trusting, confiding relationship is essential to sort of allowing this work to begin. And some, some very sort of tried and true, um, strategies that I've used to sort of help begin that process is first of all, just expressing gratitude to families for trusting me to be a part of their life and their child's life. Um, and so really entering the relationship humbly. Most of my work has been with children and families who are experiencing homelessness. And so many of the families with whom I've worked sort of have the experience of navigating lots of different systems, lots of different systems that disempower them, that make their lives more complicated, that make them sort of feel inferior or less than or under-supported. And I'm aware that as a, you know, as a teacher in the school, as an administrator, I'm viewed as part of the system. So one of the things that I try to do is to enter into the relationship in a different way than maybe, um, other parts of the system establish their relationships with a family. So I begin by expressing gratitude. I enter humbly. Um, usually the first question I ask after sort of getting to sort of introduce ourselves is sort of, can you tell me the, the story of your child's name? What is your child names mean, name, what is your child's name mean to you? Where does that name come from? How did you decide that? You know, names are really powerful and they hold a lot of meaning for families. And so understanding what that family intended and how they saw that child when that child was first named can be a powerful way to sort of honor this gift, to honor the power and the positive intention that they had for their child. And it also begins by the, the relationship by asking a question that they know the answer to, and you don't. Um, and I think that's really important for modeling sort of agency and empowering families to sort of to experience agency in our conversations with them. It's a question that we can also ask children, what do you know about your name? Who are you named for? What does that name mean? How do you feel about your name? Um, and then I think another question that I ask families is, what are your values? What are you working on? What are your priorities for your child? Um, I asked the same question of children. How do you want to grow? What do you want to learn this year? How do you want to change? What are things that you are excited to offer our classroom? What are things that you know that other kids may not know? I want to make sure that you have a chance to share. Um, and then I ask families, you know, what is it important? What, what would you like for me to know about you and your child? And all of that is before I share anything about my own expectations or sort of what I'm asking for. So I think that really centering on the family, assuming their agency and strength, talking about them from a place, talking with them and about them from a place of strength, um, really allows them to enter into that deep relationship with us and to sort of experience agency and to sort of be viewed as having agency. Um, so I think the relationship is sort of the first step in sort of really creating an environment which allows children to feel comfortable to be seen and to put their strength into the classroom. Once that relationship is established, then I think we can start sort of talking with children about their lives. And I think we have to have ways of talking with children about their life that allows life to be complex. One of the ways, you know, a lot of times people just assume that children don't have complicated lives or that children aren't navigating complexity in their lives. But like all of us, things aren't always so simple or clear cut. And so, so one of the ways that I account for that in my conversation with teachers and families is by talking about context. So saying, you know, my job is to help you figure out how to be successful in this classroom. But all of you sort of live your life in, in other places too. So, you know, so sometimes you may do something at home or in your neighborhood or at your grandparent's house or in your community or at your after-school program that isn't okay here or that is okay here or that you know how to do there, that it's okay. You know, it's sort of saying that what might work there for you or who you get to be there doesn't have to be who you are gonna be here or who you might want to be here. So, you know, sometimes, um, like in one of the communities that I worked in, boys particularly who were viewed as sort of bushy, bookish or academic, often experienced a lot of bullying. And so I found this language of, you know, out there, you know, maybe people are gonna respect you more for your strength. But that doesn't mean that in here, you can't also sort of cultivate this other kind of power for yourself. So out there, maybe you decide that's not the place to talk about what you learned in math today. But that doesn't mean that in here, you can't really love math. So I want you to think about who you want to be in here, who you want to be out there, how you have to be out there, how you have to be in here. And I want you to decide or to recognize that you get to make choices about how you are gonna be in the different parts of your life. What that is doing is it is sort of planting the seed for children, one of navigating contexts, of making them aware that there might be different rules of the game in different parts of their life, but it's also naming their agency. That you have choices about who you're gonna be and how you're gonna be in the different places of your life. So it's sort of reinforcing this idea that you are powerful and that you can find power in your life, even if it doesn't look the same in all the different parts. And so then transitioning to sort of intervention support, you know, sometimes I think folks struggle to sort of map sort of this idea of agency onto sort of learning, teaching, redirecting, supporting, um, sort of intervening is the word that some people use. And so again, I think I've worked hard in my career to find a framework that sort of honors both what children know, but also what we're asking them to do. And the way that I sort of hold that complexity, um, is through a framework that I call KSVR. KSVR. K stands for knowledge, S stands for skills, V stands for values, and R stands for resources. And so my belief is that for children to be able to do any new thing, whether it's learn something new, to develop a different kind of relationship, to change a behavior, they have to sort of have knowledge of what we're asking them to do. They have to understand it. It has to make sense to them. Um, they also have to have skills. They have to be able to do it. So it's one thing to know how something should work. It's another way to actually have the skills to be able to do it. Um, values is sort of just what it sounds like. What does this child value? And what am I asking the child to value? And are those in alignment or are they not? And R stands for resources. Does this child have what she or he or they need to be successful? Or are there resources that I need to provide them so that they can actually do this new thing that they want to do and know how to do and that I know, um, that they can do and that they want to do. And so when I'm approaching any new situation with a child, I will say, you know, what does this child know? And maybe in another context, so I notice on the playground or in your neighborhood, you're able to do this. I wonder if you can bring that knowledge in here to be able to do this. So what do you know? What do you need to know? What can you do? What do you need to learn to be able to do in order to be successful at this new thing? What do you value? What am I asking you to value? And is that hard for you? Or is it uncomfortable for you? Or is it just a value that doesn't work for you? And what do you need? So, um, so those are my three tips, um, based on our conversation today. Relationships are important. Acknowledge that context does matter, that who children may need to be to feel safe and one environment may actually place them at risk in another in their life. And so reminding them that they can choose what parts of them get pushed forward and what parts of them sort of get pushed backwards in different parts of their life. But that, instead of that happening to them, they can also make that decision in part for themselves. And lastly, KSVR, what can they not, what do they know? What do they need to know? What can they do? What do they need to learn to do? What do they value? What am I asking them to value? And what resources do they have? And what resources do they need? Thank you all so much. I really appreciate being with you today.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Um, so, well, thank you for, um, all three wonderful panels. And I would love to open up, um, our discussion so that all three panels can um, chime in, join in to share your thoughts. And what Dr. Wright just mentioned about this relationship, I think it's also something that, um, in the book, um, where Dr. Adair and Dr. Cogro was talking about, like having these community relationships with young children in the classroom is also very important. And I feel like sometimes it's hard for teachers to do it because sometimes they have this like misconceptions or stereotypes that, that teachers may have about families and, um, communities of color. So I just wanted to hear like how you, like, what do you see as those like common misconceptions about families and communities of color that, that you see? And like, how does that impact children, families, and even teachers as they are trying to build relationships? So, um, if you can, if you can share your thoughts, um, on that, um, that would be great. And also for our attendees, if you can put your questions on the box, that will be great so that our panelists can respond to.
So, I mean, would you like for me to go first or?
Yes.
Oh, sure. Yep. So the, uh, I'm sure everyone's tired of hearing me talk. Um, but so I think that, you know, one of the things that, in my experience, if I had to summarize, um, one of the common misconceptions and many times it is sort of an unexamined bias. People aren't even aware that they're doing it. But I think when we see children that come from backgrounds that are different than ours, um, particularly when those backgrounds might include economic scarcity or sort of somehow sort of otherness. I think we often assume sort of a deficit perspective, that there's something that those children don't have that they need. And so we often sort of orient to what they lack instead of what they have. And when people see us as, as less than or not complete or missing something, a healthy, resilient, psychologically sound human being says, you don't see me, you don't get to know me. I'm not gonna let you know more of me. Um, and so I think that that often then gets misinterpreted as retreat, lack of caring, lack of motivation, less than. And so what we're actually glimpsing is a reflection of ourself, right? Like what we're actually seeing is how that child sees us. Like you don't see me in my abundance. You don't think about me as a strong, powerful person. So like, why would I let you? Why would I trust you? But because of our own sort of self-focus, we miss that what the child is actually saying is you don't see me. And so I think that that deficit perspective, that beginning, sort of beginning with the assumption of less than or difference or other or less than, is really sort of where the relationship stalls right out of the gates. And so that question about what are you bringing? What do I have to know about you? Who are you trying to be in the world? What is your superpower? That's a question that I've started asking children in my first meeting with them. Like, what is your superpower? And can you tell me about a time when you used that superpower? What does it feel like in your body when you're using that superpower? Wow, I see how strong you are. What a powerful frame, right? When, when the child knows that I can see how strong she is, she wants me to see more. That feels great. I'm gonna let you see more of me. But when we start with what you aren't doing or what you can't do or what you don't have, no one wants to stick around for more of that. And so the child retreats. And we think it's about them, but it's really about us. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I also wanted to hear from, um, Dr. Cogro and Dr. Oriana, too.
I was, I was, the, the other thing I was thinking is that what Travis said about the child also goes to the parents. So like, especially for bilingual students, like parents don't know the language, they're not helping them, they don't help with homework. They're not, you know, not providing the environment the child needs. So we need to fix the parents. And they immediately bounce from this deficit idea, the idea that we need to fix the parents. And so when it's fixing the parents, it's usually thinking about middle-class white people or white families. And this is the way we want these immigrant communities to be, behave. And, um, you know, and so it goes thinking about the child as well, but also to looking at their parents. And not giving the opportunity to treat those communities with respect or having the interest to get to know them. And by that, they will see how rich actually their ideas are and what they want for their child. Like as through all the interviews, I ask them, what do you want for your child? Many of them make these big sacrifices to move here because they want a better education. So it goes against everything we hear about um, Latinx immigrant families that they don't care. They care so much that they're here and they want their children to have a better education.
Thank you. Um, did you want to add, um, Dr. Oriana?
Yeah, I mean, just to underscore some of the things I think I said and that when we talk with young adults about their experiences as language brokers across the board, they tell us, wow, nobody ever told me this. I did, sometimes I'd say they didn't know anyone else did it. Or they certainly didn't have chances to talk and share about their experiences and work together to figure out, how did you deal with this situation? How would you do? They didn't see it as a strength or a skill that they, that they learned from it or that, and that could be applied to academic work. They saw it as something separate over there. They had some shame about it because of being publicly exposed as a child of immigrants. They took in some dominant cultural ideas about, well, maybe they shouldn't do this. Maybe it's bad for children. But in fact, before they get influenced by the larger culture, they realize, oh, this is normal. It's just something you do to help your family and that families work together and that in supporting each other. So, so kids internalize a lot of deficit ideas about their own bilingualism, about their own families, about their own skills and competencies. And I love Travis's idea of turning it into, I mean, translinguaging is a superpower. Translating is a superpower. It takes a lot of work to undo the messages that kids are getting that don't tell them that. And so I think, and it's not, I mean, sometimes I think we've got to go up against these deficit perspectives. And then there's a part of me that says what we go up against directly, we actually reinforce. So let's just, what if we just start from an asset space perspective? What if we just consistently in everything we do? And that does mean keeping a check on the teacher voice because I think the teacher voice writ large sees, the teacher sees their, their job to coach and fix and create and help kids get better. But that can lead to to focus on problems that need to be fixed, gaps, something they don't know. And I find every time my mind says, oh, but these kids don't know this or these kids can't do this. I have to, and that goes for college students as well as young children, right? But when I do that, I say, wait a minute, what can they do? What do they know? What, what are they doing that I might not be seeing when I focus on this spelling error or this whatever? We saw, for example, that the kids in a multilingual community have this flexibility and versatility with spelling. So they might invent their names. So one girl named Cutie Pie, yeah, was her name. And she sometimes spelled it C-U-I, C-U-T-I-E. Sometimes she spelled it C-U-R-I. The R in Spanish, like cutie, cutie pie. And sometimes P-I-E and sometimes P-A-I. And it would be easy to say, oh, you're confused and that's wrong. No, look at what she knows about different sound and symbol systems. And so reframing to see potential, possibility, strength, not just problems. And it's, to me, it's a continuous work we have to do to, when our mind leaps to the problems, see possibility.
Great. I agree. And there were some questions from the attendees. And I think this is maybe Dr. Colgrove you can respond to. So one of the attendees asked about, like, can you tell me more about this, like the definition of agency? And also like, how can we open up the classrooms or having those opportunities when we are in this still in pandemic? We want to open up, but then how can we authentically do it considering the situation that we are in right now? So, Dr. Colgrove, can you share your response?
Yeah, actually I was looking for the definition. It's page eight. So I'm going to read it to make it more short. Agency is that, uh, oh, here. Our definition of agency is the ability to influence and make decisions about how and what is learned in order to expand capabilities. So one of the important things about agency is that we all have an agency. Sometimes we get to enact our agency in our learning. And when that happens, we get to see the capabilities. So let's say in the example of the video, because of the way Ms. Bailey thinks about her class, you can see children demonstrating all those capabilities by asking questions, adding details, thinking about their own experiences, sharing about their own families and their accidents, just to say something little. But if Ms. Bailey have walked into the class, say, oh, I'm doing okay. My kid is okay. The lady who hit us, okay. So let's move on. Get your calendar. Let's move and continue our class. We have missed all the things that we actually got to learn. So that, that action, that act that she decided in that moment to pursue this project of the car accident allowed children to enact their agency in all the ways and show all the capabilities we have opportunities to do. Now, the second part of that question, the, the how we open the classroom, especially with COVID, I think it's a little more tricky because obviously there's more restrictions in how we are interacting with the school. The possibility is to get inside the classroom, but at the same time, I think about sometimes the opportunities are open to find other ways. One thing that I did as a teacher that worked really well is that every Wednesday I called three parents. So every Wednesday, I don't know why I saw Wednesday was the best day of my week, but I put it in my calendar during planning time and I called three parents. So maybe they're not coming into a class, but you can call them and say something good about their kids, something that learning, something you noticed. And I will advise you not to say your child is wonderful, your child is adorable, but say something meaningful. Your child is working really hard to write his or her name. I noticed that he's working really hard in helping other people, taking turns, so, you know, reading to others or whatever thing you notice that they're doing, put it in a sticky note and then make sure you make a short and sweet and meaningful talk. And I think that will be something that could be an idea or something to do because it's difficult. I think Marjorie have better ideas than me.
No, I want to build on what you said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It made me think about, I observed and recorded kids as they translated in their own parent-teacher conferences. And when I talk to people about this, they, I say, what do you think happened? And they say, oh, I'm sure they inflated their performance. They said they're doing great. And in fact, we found the opposite, like kids minimize their, their own performance. And they, you know, if the teacher said she's doing wonderfully, they said, this is a good boy, bien. I'm doing good. You know, but so he took it down a notch. But the point is, and this connects to what you were saying, Kim, is that the structure of the conference also contributed to that because more often than not, teachers said, well, she's doing well in these things and but this is the focus, right? So they might say something nice at the beginning, but then go to the focus. Because isn't that where our teacher mindset goes to, like what you think needs to be fixed? But the kids were savvy and they knew that nice thing that was said at the beginning wasn't the important thing. The important thing is the main point that's coming next. That's the problem. So one small, and I love that, I think it's, there was a comment in the text about immediately, Glenn, I think, wrote about immediately actionable things. An immediately actionable thing is to separate any time you want to talk to a parent about a problem, separate it fully from first the praise, like not the praise as the lead-in to the problem, but really stay with the good before you get to. And it's hard because kids know, oh, that, that's just, yeah, it's not the real thing. The real thing is the problem. Oh, another, it may, coming along, she's developing and the, and the child would say, she said, I have to practice more. So they took up even more responsibility. So if you want the, the, the superpower praise to come through, you've got to really make.
And briefly, I would like to say that those phone calls were always positive. So it was really short and sweet and something positive, not negative. But the point was, when something negative came, we have built that relationship that Travis and Marjorie be talking about. So when something bad came, it wasn't like, like a crazy conversation because we have talked throughout the year or we have talked through months. So we kind of know each other and that conversation went way more smoothly. So I wanted to add that.
Thank you so much. And our hour was super short. It felt so short. But well, thank you for all of our panels. And I would like to turn it over to Caroline so that she can finish it up and do the closing remarks. But again, thank you for all the panelists and attendees for today.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for joining us today and bringing your questions, your insightful questions to this rich discussion. Thank you to each of our panelists. We have Dr. Keomi Sanchez Suzuki Colgrove, Dr. Marjorie Oriana, and Dr. Travis Wright. And thank you for bringing your ideas and your presentations and strategies to the forefront and for working in your lives to empower children. And Sunmin Lee, thank you so much for facilitating an excellent and riveting discussion. Just a few housekeeping remarks as we close. A certificate of attendance will be emailed to you, all the, all the participants 24 hours after the roundtable. And a recording will be posted on Highscope YouTube channel and in the video archive on our blog, The Playground, which you can find at highscope.org/theplayground. You can also purchase your copy of Segregation by Experience: Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades at highscope.org/store. We have our next roundtable coming up on January 19th. You can register for that at highscope.org/roundtable. This session will focus on the politics of teaching. You can register at highscope.org/roundtable again. Our call for proposals is opening soon for the 2022 Highscope International Conference. And this hybrid conference will be on May 11th, 12th, and 13th in Detroit and with a virtual and on-demand session. So you can find more information at highscope.org/internationalconference. Finally, Highscope is a nonprofit organization and you can donate to invest in elevating early childhood education outcomes. Your donation to Highscope ensures our research and development of innovative assessment, curriculum, and professional development tools and resources which will empower the next generation of dedicated early childhood educators. You can find more information and donate today in more of our programs such as this at highscope.org/invest. Again, thank you all so much for joining us today. It was a wonderful discussion. And I hope you all have an excellent afternoon and that we see you again at a future roundtable.